We are, okay.
Yeah, this time there's two, right?
Okay.
All right.
Seventeen eighteen go together.
Okay.
Sorry seventeen eighteen, my number's wrong at the bottom of my plan, sorry.
Folks, we'll come back to order for our next two docketed items this afternoon. I'd like to call Ms. Dunn again to read the next two dockets, please.
All right, docket PZ dash one eight dash zero one seven. Application has been filed by Ballard Hills LLC for the approval of a revised preliminary subdivision plan for Ballard Woods Section Four, Lot 98. The property is located at four zero four two Ballard Woods Drive, Smithville. The zoning is AG1 agricultural residential district. Docket number PZ dash one eight dash zero one eight, application has been filed by JS Real Estate LLC for the approval of the preliminary subdivision plan for thirty-three lots on approximately fifty-four point three acres to be known as Ballard Woods Section Five. The property is located at East Highway twenty-two and Ballard Woods Drive, Smithville. The zoning is AG1 agricultural slash residential district.
All right, good afternoon again. Amy Ali, Oldham County Planning and Development Services, Ms. Dunn stated, these are two separate docketed items, but I'm going to present them together because they intertwine with each other and are related. So first I will go over docket eighteen dash zero one seven, which is the revised preliminary subdivision plan for Ballard Woods Section Four, Lot 98. The property address is forty forty-two Ballard Woods Drive, and it's approximately one point two-two-eight acres. This is an aerial view of the vacant lot in Ballard Woods Section Four. Site history, on October twenty-second, two thousand and two, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved the request by Christian Development for a preliminary subdivision plan on a hundred and five lots on approximately two hundred and three acres, zoned AG1 agricultural and CO1 conservation to be known as Ballard Woods. That was docket three five zero eight. The applicant is proposing to redevelop Lot 98 into a roadway to connect the current Ballard Woods subdivision, Section Four, into a proposed new section to be known as Ballard Woods Section Five. The lot was previously plotted as a single-family building lot. The revised plan shows utility easements on each side of the proposed road, which would be required to be constructed to county standards. There is a decrease in the number of buildable lots, and the revised plan meets all the requirements of the zoning and subdivision regulations. So this was submitted with the application. This is Lot 98, it's highlighted there in red, and then you'll see the utility easements highlighted in blue, and then the roadway, actual pavement width there, roadway, is that right? Well, yeah, roadway there, highlighted in gray. So that's Lot 98, which would be, is being requested to be the roadway into Ballard Woods Section Five. So now we're going to talk about Section Five. So Section Five, this is an application by JS Real Estate LLC. They're asking for the approval of a preliminary subdivision plan for thirty-three lots on approximately fifty-four point three acres. It would be known as Ballard Woods Section Five. The property is located East Highway twenty-two in Ballard Woods Drive. A little bit of history, this section that is going to be Section Five of Ballard Woods is part of what we've been called previously, the Miller Property and Ballard Glen subdivision. So the history on Ballard Glen subdivision was in March of two thousand and five, the Planning Commission approved a request by Jordan River Development for a zoning map amendment from AG1 and CO1 to R1 residential, AG1 and CO1. And then they also approved a preliminary subdivision plan for a hundred and eighty-four single-family lots on four large tracts, a total of three hundred and fourteen acres. So this was the original subdivision plan for Ballard Glen. And the area that we're speaking of is right here. In September of two thousand and sixteen, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved a revised preliminary subdivision plan for Ballard Glen Section Three, consisting of forty-four single-family lots on approximately forty acres. The commission also approved a revised preliminary subdivision plan for Ballard Glen Section Two, consisting of fifty-three lots on approximately seventy-two acres. In May of this year, just a few months ago, the Planning Commission approved a revised preliminary plan for Ballard Glen Section Three for forty-four lots. That was just a change in the road layout. And then this is the other history related back to Ballard Woods that I just previously read, and the approval in two thousand and two for the hundred and five lots on two hundred and three acres. So this was the original plan for Ballard Woods subdivision. And the area that we are speaking of is in this area here, the connection road. The applicant is proposing a preliminary subdivision plan comprised of thirty-three lots and approximately fifty-four point three acres. The tract of land is located to the northwestern portion of the Miller Property, which is also a location of Ballard Glen Sections One, Two, and Three. So this just kind of gives you another overview. This is the existing Ballard Woods subdivision. This is Ballard Glen subdivision. You all just recently approved an area over here. This is Ballard Glen Section Three. The applicant is proposing to connect the thirty-three lot development to Ballard Woods Section Four via proposed roadway through Lot 98, which is now vacant and owned by the applicant. So this is the layout. This is Lot 98 that we just spoke of, and this is the layout of the proposed thirty-three lot section. The proposed plan also includes a stub into the Miller Property to the east to allow for adequate access and interconnectivity as outlined in the Oldham County subdivision regulations, and also as outlined in the technical review committee staff comment letter. So there is a stub here into the Miller Property, or the future section of Ballard Glen. The proposed plan also includes a stub in the Miller, okay, I just read that. So that is, this again is just an aerial view. Where the star is located, that is Lot 98. This is the connection point. Section five point two, B2 subdivision design principles, street layout system, item I, or one, says the layout of the local street system should not create excessive travel links and should provide connections to adjacent properties unless topographical constraints prohibit the connections. And then item B, the last sentence I won't read, it talks about the hierarchy and that the streets have been extended to adjacent property in our planned phase of the same subdivision. It talks about stub streets. It specifically says that the deed restrictions of a subdivision shall prohibit property owners from opposing or filing lawsuits against the future street connections. And then item two says each development shall provide stub streets to provide local access between planned subdivisions adjacent to one another and to undeveloped properties adjacent that are subject to development. The stub street may only provide local access between the adjacent subdivisions and shall not be considered as a primary or additional entrance or exit into the subdivision. Local access stub street shall be designed so that no section conveys more ADTs, average daily trips, than, greater than five hundred vehicles. The plan outlines eight point five acres of open space, which backs up to Lot nineteen through twenty-one in Grandell subdivision, and lots ninety-one through ninety-three of Ballard Woods. The applicant has a note on the plan stating trees in the eight point five acre open space will remain with the exception of trees located within the limits of the proposed detention basin. So this is, again, the proposed subdivision plan for Section Five, and this is the open space area here. A traffic assessment was completed for the proposed development, and I will defer those comments to our traffic engineer. And the plan meets all other zoning and subdivision regulations. So Ballard Woods, the Section Five preliminary subdivision plan, proposed binding elements. The approval applies only to the plan presented at the July twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. There shall be no subdivision of any lots into a greater number of lots without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission. The preliminary plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at the time of approval, and no record plat will be approved until all standards are satisfied. Item four may change based off the comments from our traffic engineer. It says at the time Ballard Glen subdivision connects to Ballard Woods, a full traffic impact study will be required. And that is all that I have. Oh, no, lie. Pictures. Lot 98, this is Lot 98 Ballard Woods Section Four. This is looking into the lot. This is the east adjoining, so this is to the right of Lot 98. And then this is the yard. If you look on the area map where the star is, this is, the house I just showed you was here. This is Lot 98. This just kind of gives you the side yards on those. This is the west adjoining, so again, this is the property to the left of Lot 98. And this is their shared side yard. This is the south view, so this is across the street. This is just the side yard there. Again, the south view. So in summary, you have two items before you. The first is Ballard Woods Section Four revised preliminary subdivision plan, and that should be PZ docket eighteen dash oh one eight. I have those off a number. The applicant is requesting approval of a revised preliminary subdivision plan for Ballard Woods Section Four. They're proposing to redevelop Lot 98 into a roadway to connect the current Ballard Woods Section Four into a new section to be known as Ballard Woods Section Five. And then the next one is the preliminary subdivision plan for Ballard Woods Section Five, where they are proposing thirty-three lots on approximately fifty-four point three acres to be known as Ballard Woods Section Five.
Just a quick question, is that one supposed to be eighteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
The one before that is seventeen?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
All right, thank you. And before we move into questions, I'll call on, I guess, Ms. Wall first, and then I'll get, call Mr. Shade up here in a minute.
Yes. She hasn't been sworn in.
I know, yeah. Yeah, there's, yeah. We'll get you sworn in and...
Do you sound me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
And just name an address for the record.
Paula Wall with Neil Schaefer, two hundred Whittington Parkway, Suite two oh five, four oh two, two two.
And you are our Oldham County Traffic Consultant, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Per the Oldham County subdivision regulation, roadway capacity standards, I conducted a review of the traffic assessment, which is initially dated June twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, and then subsequently revised last week, July seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, for this project prepared by Diane Zimmerman Traffic Engineering, and I have the following comments. Following the TRC, it was determined that the project only met the Oldham County threshold for requiring a traffic assessment and not a full traffic study. Overall, the review of the traffic assessment did not indicate that there were any substantive errors or discrepancies in the assessment methodology or the data, traffic data that was presented. If you're familiar with the regulations, traffic assessments typically don't perform analysis, like capacity analysis, so typically more of a statement as far as trip generation, existing conditions, trip distribution. In summarizing the study's conclusions, as stated in the report, based on the volume of traffic generated by bought Ballard Woods Section Five for the year two thousand and twenty-one, there's minimal impact to existing network and no potential problems were identified during the assessment. Therefore, no mitigations were necessary as a result, nor were there any recommended as part of that report. However, subsequent, and part of my, part of my review, I did a preliminary analysis of the intersection at twenty-two and Ballard Vista Drive, and it does, in the no build, which is twenty twenty, twenty, sorry, twenty twenty-one no build, and the build scenarios, a left turn lane on Kentucky twenty-two into Ballard Vista was warranted. In referencing the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet comments, they indicated that a full traffic study will be required prior to their final approval. So therefore, it's recommended that there be a condition of approval or binding element that applied to this development that would require the further traffic analysis be provided per the state requirements to determine possible improvements to twenty-two prior to their, any issuance of an approach permit and construction plan approval. And that, that concludes my recommendations.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure we'll have some questions here in a little bit, but... Mr. Shade, you want to come up from the engineer's office?
Good afternoon. My name is Derek Shade. I'm representing the Oldham County Engineering Department. Just have one general comment. In addition to the TRC comments, which are still applicable, we have one comment associated with the blue line streams present on the property. Specifically, there's a few blue line streams that flow across approximately four-plus lots. Given the location of the streams, we're just hoping for some clarification regarding the intent, how we're, if they're going to be moved, constructed over, what the intent is in order for the lots to be usable. That's all the comments on there.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Williams from Oldham County School Board. And we need to get you sworn in and name an address for the record.
Do you sound me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Michael Williams, Director of Pupil Personnel, Oldham County Board of Education, sixty-one sixty-five, West Highway one forty-six in Crestwood. As you can see, this is the, actually, the first subdivision we have applied the new multiplier to. Capacity is inadequate based on the current numbers, but in that multiplier policy, when you levy everything out, it brings the final capacity percentage to a hundred and twenty point five nine percent with the added subdivisions that are still waiting either to be built out or in the process of being built. So that would warrant, based on that multiplier, a phasing rate of fifteen units per year. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions, but it's sort of become mechanical at that point.
And it's hard, hard to see this on the screen, but it's, what are the capacities of, like, Locust Grove and...
Locust Grove, currently, its available capacity, it's at a hundred and five point three three percent, so that would be, it's forty students over capacity. East is at a hundred and twenty-seven point two, and Oldham County High School's at a hundred and twelve point six four.
And this will figure into your all's, when you shuffle folks around or whatever, that...
Yes, sir.
...numbers will come into, into play?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll just start, while you're here, just don't run off yet. Is there any questions for Mr. Williams as far as school capacity while he's up here at the podium? Any questions from the commission? Don't see any? Thank you, sir.
Right, welcome.
Commissioners, are there any questions for staff, anybody that has spoken so far as far as the staff? Do y'all have any questions that you need clarified on? Oh, Mr. Finney?
I had a question for her, Ms. Wall.
Okay.
Could you explain again the, it seemed to be that there was, there was something that was going to trigger a, a traffic study by the state at a certain point in time? Would you...
I'm recommending that prior to construction approval by Oldham County, there's a traffic analysis completed per the state highway department's requirements to determine whether there's any improvements needed.
And you're speaking specifically of the possibility of a left-hand turn lane off of twenty-two into Ballard Woods?
That would be the emphasis of the analysis, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, any additional questions for staff? All right, seeing none, we'll move into the presentation of the applicant or representative and others in support of the application. Mr. Baxter?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to get Mr. Vinsan and Ms. Zimmerman sworn, and Mr. Shum, if you don't mind, I'd like you to choose one as well at this point.
Raise your right hand. Do you sound me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Again, my name is Barry Baxter. My address is one one seven West Main Street here in La Grange. I represent the applicants on these, this combined presentation. Before I get too far into my presentation, and because I think we just heard from Ms. Wall, I think this would be an appropriate time for me to call Ms. Zimmerman up here and allow her to testify regarding her analysis of the traffic situation as it relates to Ballard Woods Section Five. So I'm going to stand aside and allow her to go ahead and, and talk about that if we could.
Good afternoon, Diane Zimmerman, one two eight zero three, High Meadows Pike Prospect, four zero zero five nine. I did prepare the traffic analysis, and we received Ms. Wall's comments at eleven forty-five this morning. And so I want to present a little bit of additional information about the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet's guidelines for providing left turn lanes, and whether or not you should consider this as a, a condition of approval or binding element. I'm not sure which language we're using for this case, but if, if I'm going to refer down here to HD nine oh two point one one, this page is out of the Highway Transportation Cabinet's Highway Design Manual, and it says, "The following are guidelines for left turn lane recommendations at intersections." And so then we go to the next page, where we talk about left turn lanes on unsignaled intersections and the evaluations. And it says to use the chart that Ms. Wall used in doing her preliminary analysis as one of one, of several options as to whether or not we're improving the safety, the operational, or other considerations for left turn lanes. And I'm reading from up here in nine oh two point eleven point two. We have done, or I did yesterday, a capacity analysis of the unsignaled intersection of Kentucky twenty-two at Ballard Vista. The left turn movement here is the left turn. That movement operates at Level Service A with a delay of seven point seven seconds. That does not indicate there is a capacity deficiency at this intersection. Additionally, I pulled the crash data for the last three years, and there have been no recorded crashes reported to the Kentucky State Police or Oldham County Police at this location, again, indicating there is not a safety requirement. I'll go back to, again, the Highway Design Manual guidance. These are guidelines. This is not a, when you reach this volume, you shall install a left turn lane. It is one requirement. It is a great tool to use for a, a brand-new development where we do not yet know the safety impacts of it, but in this particular location, we have an existing intersection. It is functioning adequately, appropriately, and with the additional traffic generated by these thirty-three lots, there will not be an increase, a decrease in the capacity of the intersection or a need to require the construction of that left turn lane.
Ms. Zimmerman?
Yes.
And I know, because I get confused about these terms, you've got a traffic assessment?
Yes.
And what's the other, I mean, just that there's an analysis and assessment? I mean, those are terms of...
In the Oldham County regs, the second level is a traffic impact study that is required when a development generates a one hundred trips as a whole.
Okay, and that was not required in this particular situation?
That was not. This is thirty-three additional lots and would not generate a hundred trips.
Okay, all right. Just because I get confused about those terms sometimes. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
I'm going to leave these here because I'm assuming they will have to be submitted.
Yes, sure. So, Mr. Chairman, at this point, I would like to tender the three exhibits that Ms. Zimmerman referred to.
Okay.
Where am I here? There we go. So I, I've done a quick PowerPoint presentation as it relates to our application. This is a drawing that you all have already seen, and that Mr. Vinsan, when he gets up and talks about it, a little bit more about the technical aspects of the plan that he will be referring to. And this just basically shows, again, the access point to, to Lot 98 in Ballard Woods. This would be the outlined area is Section Five of Ballard Woods that we are proposing. And this is the stub road that I would note was not originally on our plan when we went to TRC, but was required as part of staff comments to be included in the plan that we bring to you today. I think Amy was very clear about what the regulations require and why it is that that stub road does appear at that particular location. My picture's not nearly as good, but this is the Lot 98 access, the proposed location of it. We are asking to redevelop Lot 98 and connect the current Ballard Woods subdivision, Section Four, into a proposed new section to be known as Ballard Woods Section Five. This lot is, again, one point two-two-eight acres and is zoned AG1. We are showing revised easements, or, excuse me, the revised plan shows utility easements on each side of the proposed road, and that has to be, the road obviously has to be constructed at the county standards, and we will end up in this plan losing a buildable lot, and that's going to be repurposed for this access. I do note, and I was going to point out, the staff report that you all were provided on page two makes a note that the proposed plan appears to be in conformance with all zoning and subdivision regulations. So we are in compliance with your all's rules and regulations in bringing this application. We go back to a little bit of history, and you all will remember, we were here in April with a, a different developer, same people, but a different company, and we were asking at that point to move an existing stub road location from Ballard Woods into Ballard Glen Section Three. We were asking to relocate it from between lots fifty-four and fifty-five to repurpose Lot fifty-eight for that, which would have lined us up with an existing roadway system inside of Ballard Woods. There was some opposition to that and some complaint about that. So at that point, we, the matter was tabled, and we came back the next month with a different plan that did not show anything attaching to the existing stub out of Ballard Woods. We have Ballard Glen Section Three, that, again, we were required to stub out of by the regulations, but this doesn't connect to Ballard Glen Section Three. But I only bring that to your attention because there was some discussion about there being a stub into Ballard Woods at some particular location, okay? In the staff report also, as it relates to PZ eighteen zero zero seventeen, under the previously approved binding elements from October twenty-second of two thousand and two, there was a binding element, condition of approval, that there would be, under number eight, a stub street extended to the east line of the development, in parentheses, Miller Property, at approximately Lot sixty-five or wherever most appropriate. So this has been something that's been on the table for a long time, and I, you know, I, I want to make sure that everybody is aware of that. So we have, we have PZ eighteen eighteen, so we, we move to the next one, and that is property that abuts Ballard Woods, and as you saw in the map that Amy showed you, and I'm going to guess that's north. I mean, if the picture's oriented north, it's north of the existing Ballard Woods, and it is to the west of Ballard Glen. It does not, at this point, directly abut Ballard Glen. That property, the Ballard Hills LLC, is property that is owned by Mr. Shum, and he owns Lot 98. He also is a member-owner of JS Real Estate. So there's the connection between those two, and I know we had Ballard Glen HDC, and we've had a number of other entities, so I want to make sure we're clear about who the players are. I talked about that previous binding element that was required in the stat, that mentioned in your staff report. This is just a little site information. Mr. Vinsan will go over this in more detail. We've got acre lots, essentially is the smallest lot that you've got in here, and we talked about the open space, there's going to be thirty-three lots, how much is in the street right-of-way, and those things that are all part of the specifics of the plan. So, again, just to orient you, we're talking about this being the northwest portion of what was known as the Miller Property. So that's, that's what we're cutting off at this point, and again, we were required to have a stub on the eastern property line from the proposed Section Five into the remaining lands of the Miller Property. Section 5 into the remaining lands of the Miller property according to the subdivision regulations. Our plan, as I indicated, and it says in the staff report, this also, the proposed plan appears to be in conformance with all zoning and subdivision regulations. And Amy further commented in your staff report that the Oldham County Future Land Use Map 2014 predicts the use of this track to be single-family residential. These are some TRC comments, and I do want you to know that Ms. Wall's testimony and what she talked about today and the report that she gave you, we received at 11:41 this morning. So, if I say something in here incorrectly, that's because I was basing this presentation upon the information that I had available to me when I typed the PowerPoint yesterday Mr. Harris made a number of comments. We believe all of those comments relate to, except for the blue line stream, which I'll have Mr. Vinsan address, relate to construction-type issues that will be addressed at the time that we submit our plans, and that we had a traffic study completed and it did not call for any additional mitigation. So, this is the stub street requirements. And I just went through here and I summarized what it said in the TRC letter from Amy to my client after the TRC, what we were required to do. And that information is almost verbatim in what she has put into her report and her presentation to you all today about us being required to have a stub street out of Section 5. This is the regulation that she already quoted to you all. I go on, I'm putting that in there. I don't want to rehash all of this, but I go on to put that in just because I think it's important for you all to know that we are complying with that regulation. The typical homes that are going to be constructed in here will be priced from the 400s and up. And we're giving you just an idea of the type of home. There's several pictures that I'll show you just to give you an indication of what the homes are going to look like that are going to be in Section 5. I would ask you all, based upon that, to approve this docket, the revised preliminary plan for Ballard Woods, Section 4. I've given you a goal and objective from the comprehensive plan that I believe supports PZ 1817. And obviously, we would have to comply with any binding elements or conditions of approval that you all imposed today. Likewise, the same goal, LU-2 encourages a range of housing opportunities. That is a basis, I think, to allow approval of this particular application. This is on 18. And our position would be, as it relates to both 17 and 18, we conform with the regulations. We've done what we are supposed to do, and we are legally entitled to an approval. So, I'm going to let Mr. Vinsan speak a little bit, and then I'll get back up with just a couple more comments, and we'll move on.
All right. What do you have?
My name is Bob Vinsan. I'm with Vinsan Engineering and Land Surveying, 306 West Jefferson Street here in La Grange, Ballard Woods, Section 5, is a true extension of the existing Ballard Woods subdivision that was approved in 2002 and was constructed over a five-year period. There are a few vacant lots that are still available in the first four sections of Ballard Woods, and there are some houses that, some new houses that are currently under construction. Earlier this year, my clients acquired the balance of the Miller farm, as Amy mentioned earlier, that was approved as the Ballard Glen subdivision in 2005. They believe this portion of the farm is more in keeping with the existing Ballard Woods subdivision and are proposing to develop the 54.3 acres in the same manner as Ballard Woods exists today. Again, we are proposing 33 lots on 54.3 acres. There are 4.8 acres in the road right-of-way. We have proposed 8.5 acres in open space. That area is at the southwest corner of the development. Included in that 8.5 acres of open space will be a dedicated detention basin, which will be here. That detention basin will be sized to accommodate the storm water runoff as well as meet the requirements of the Oldham County Storm Water Quality Management Ordinance. That leaves us with a net density of 1.25 acres per lot, and the minimum lot size is 1 acre, so we're well above the minimum of 1 acre. The setbacks for this development are the same as the existing Ballard Woods. The front setback is 50 feet. The side setbacks are 15 feet on each side, and there's a 40-foot setback in the rear. The way that this section fits with the existing Ballard Woods, Section 4, along this line here, there's going to be a, really, a natural buffer that's going to occur in between the two. The closest existing house that we have in Section 4, and then where we would construct the new houses in Section 3, there's going to be a distance of at least 200 feet. So, and that's because of the topography and how the lots lay out. The lots in Section 4 are a little bit deeper than what we're proposing there, just to the north of that. The property is currently zoned R1, AG1, and CO1. Okay. The existing land over here is zoned R1, so that only impacts Lot 16 and 17. The conservation district is in this area down here. So, the vast majority of the property is zoned AG1, and that's agricultural with the residential application. As both Amy and Barry mentioned to you, this is the redevelopment plan for Lot 98. Lot 98 is in, was approved as a part of Ballard Woods, Section 4. And we propose to take the new road through the center of the lot. We'll have a 50-foot right-of-way. There'll be 32-foot utility easement on the south side, which will include a 12-foot Oldham County Water District easement. On the north, or on the west side, I'm sorry, there will be a 20-foot utility easement also. Since this development is basically going to have a loop road, LGD will probably loop the utility, so it will enter through the east side of Lot 98 and then will exit through the west side of Lot 98. Road pavement will be the same as Ballard Woods. It'll be 22 feet from face of curb to face of curb, and we will have a 50-foot right-of-way. That will leave a buffer of about 65 feet on both sides between the face of the curb and the property line. So, that'll give a little bit of a buffer between the road and the existing lots that are there on Lot 99 and 97. Also, on the south side of Lot 98, there's all the existing utilities. We have water, gas, and electric, and then the cable and other telecommunications are We did an extensive onsite evaluation with Charlie Ward from the Oldham County Health Department. We excavated approximately 20 holes with a backhoe. The results indicated that most lots are suitable for typical onsite septic systems, just as we encountered in the existing Ballard Woods subdivision. I also had a meeting with Chief Stephen Fonte from the Ballard's Fire Department. We came up with a plan that I've got here before you that shows the proposed fire hydrants. There's an existing fire hydrant here on Lot 99. And the balance of the property as we develop it, there will be four new hydrants. They'll be located here, 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 and here. They will meet the guidelines for fire protection. They're located no more than 800 feet apart. And we also met with Russ Rose from the Oldham County Water District, and we have adequate water supply to provide for the minimum fire protection that's required. The site generally drains gently to the southwest and will be served by one large detention basin. This basin will provide both detention and storm water treatment as required by the Oldham County Storm Water Ordinance. The topography in the proposed Ballard Woods, Section 5, is very similar to the existing four sections of Ballard Woods subdivision. And there are many existing hardwood trees that we'll try to preserve as much as possible. As Amy mentioned in her report, the Oldham County engineer has deemed that we have to remove all trees inside the detention basin, so we'll lose quite a few in that area because of the requirements of the storm water quality that we have now. These detention basins are pretty large compared to what we might be used to. The road system will have general slopes, generally no more than 5%, and it will be constructed to minimize the ground disturbance as much as possible. In answering Mr. Shade's comments, there are some streams on the site. We haven't made the determination yet that they are blue line streams. If they are, we will get the appropriate approvals and permits that would be necessary if we have to use them. There would be, there's going to be a couple, well, let's see, there's going to be a crossing here, 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 and here. So, if they meet the criteria that would require a permit and mitigation, we would take care of that. But generally, what we're going to try to do is not impact those streams in any way. We'll leave them as they are, and we'll generate our drainage easements to fit the best that we can. We've laid out the subdivision so that if you look on there, you'll see that the building sites are all outside those natural drains. And if there's any of them that are tight, we've really increased the size of them, like Lot 24 there, you can see how much bigger it is than some of the other lots. So, we have accounted for that in our design. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think that concludes our application. Obviously, we'll answer any questions you all have at the appropriate time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right. With that, is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this application? Anyone here to speak in support of? Okay. Seeing no one, who would like to speak or have testimony or questions opposing the application? Okay. Do we have more than, I know there's an attorney. If I could, let's get folks that stand up that would like to, you know, have an opportunity to speak. A couple folks, three? Okay. All right, that's fine. We've got 50 minutes or whatever here, and so, you know, we'll have plenty of opportunity, but-
He'll swear them in for us.
Oh, sure, I can do that. You're an attorney, aren't you?
Yes.
Yeah. Go ahead and stand up, and we'll get you sworn in right now. Go ahead.
Do you sound like you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. All righty. We'll call you up here just shortly, but-
Amy, would you go back to your, your-
We need your name and address for the record.
Sure. I need that one map of the, kind of, the tax map, I think, gives a good overview. While she's doing that, my name's Tanner Nichols at Frost Brown Todd, 400 West Market, Louisville, Kentucky, here on behalf of the Homeowners Association of Ballard Woods, which is about 100 lot owners.
Which, which one?
It's the one that kind of shows it. I think that one's perfect. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Commissioner and Mr. Chairman. If this feels familiar, it is, right? I mean, it wasn't too long ago that we were here arguing against a stub road into Ballard Glen 3. And I think Mr. Baxter did a good job, and so did Ms. Alvey, kind of summarizing what's going on here. But I know you have to go through this and have so many other matters, but I just want to point out that previously, when we were here back in April, the proposal was for this property here, Ballard Glen 3, to have a new stub road into that approval of that subdivision. And they proposed to put a stub road just north of that, my red mark there. And we opposed that at that time, basically, for two reasons. The first reason was, we didn't think the lot owners were put on notice. As a public policy, we thought, you know, that doesn't seem right, that these people that bought lots in Ballard Woods would then have the subdivision changed on them and not know where, you know, the lots that they were buying, if there was going to be a road next to them or another home. And our proposal at that time said, "The existing stub road that was approved with Ballard Woods for any connector is in this area right here." It's actually the stub road that was part of the subdivision plan. And so, our position at that time was, hey, if you want to connect to Ballard Glen, you've got to connect through that that's already part of the plan. So, that was at that time. And then additionally, we said, hey, and this may not go to the Planning Commission, but we think it still needs to be a part of the public record, is that we have deed restrictions with the developer. We have a contract with him, and that contract says, hey, you're not going to put any connector roads to any other subdivisions. It's only going to, it's only going to be, it's got to be a Ballard Woods extension. It's got to be another part, another section of Ballard Woods. So, when they came back the next time, and they came back in May for this Ballard Glen section, they did away with the stub road. We think, and I contend now, we know that at that time, the plan was to come in here, call this new section Ballard Woods, so they can make the connector. Well, our argument's still the same as it was before, that we had the same concerns that we had back in April. First of all, those people, especially those people that own Lots 97 and 99, when they bought and built those homes, and you all saw the pictures of those homes, they had no idea that there was going to be a road put there. They were never put on notice. Mr. Baxter refers to a 2002 plan or a binding element at that point. When it talks, he says, "The east connection of that," he was talking about there being a connector up here, but nowhere in the plans did it have a connection to Ballard Woods. The only connector to Ballard Woods was this one down here that I point. Amy, how'd I clear it again?
Bottom right corner.
Bottom right. Is this control?
No.
Out of the screen.
The screen.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. So, so the only, the only notice that they were put on, as the homeowners of Ballard Woods, was that if there was ever a connection, it was going to be in this area here, down By the applicant's own words, and Mr. Baxter said, "He doesn't want a connector." His plan originally, after our meeting in April, when we came out, by his own words, he said, "I never intended on having a connector. They made me put this connector road in when I developed Sections 1 through 4." The proposal that he's talking about for Section 5, when he came and met with the homeowners, it didn't have a connector road outside of going into a different section. He came and met with them at a fire station and said, "Here's what I'm proposing." There were still some concerns, certainly, on behalf of Ballard Woods homeowners, but there was no connector road. So, the applicant, the developer, doesn't want it. Clearly, Ballard Woods doesn't want it, and we don't think it's allowed under, certainly, our deed restrictions or our contract. So, the question is, who wants it, right? Well, we know that the planning staff and the county, they want it because of subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan. Well, I would say that, I would say that the comprehensive plan are guidelines, much like Mr. Baxter talked about on guidelines for the traffic and their traffic consultant, that those are guidelines. Subdivision regulations, a little bit different, but I would contend that we don't have strict adherence to those subdivision regulations. And in fact, with just- And in fact, with just ten or fifteen minutes research, I found three subdivisions here in Oldham County that, much like Ballard Woods, don't have any connector roads. And they've been approved over the years. One is Willow Woods, one is Artesian Park, and one is Northwood East. So those, in about ten or fifteen minutes of research, I found, you all, some of you on the commission, maybe live in neighborhoods or have family members that live in neighborhoods that have one entrance. And while we understand there's a public policy position for connector roads, there are also counters to those. Studies from all over the country have shown that people feel safer when there's one entrance, one exit. They feel safer for their kids. Additionally, studies have shown that those neighborhoods that have one entrance and one exit, home values are higher. So we would contend that this is not the subdivision to make an example of our subdivision regulations. We think that we have, we have some of these subdivisions that have been approved with only one entrance and one exit. They may not even have the mitigating factor of the deed restrictions or our contract, what, you know, which is essentially a contract with the developer that there wouldn't be connector roads to anything except Ballard Woods. There may be a question. Again, it ties back to our meeting with the applicant at the fire station. If you look at the Technical Review Committee report, there was no opposition here. Why was there no opposition? We didn't think that there was anything to oppose. It feels like, to my clients, it feels like the goal line was moved at the Technical Review Committee. That the applicant shows up and says, "This is the plan that I want for Section Five of Ballard Woods." He comes to the Technical Review Committee and the staff then adds on the connector road to the Ballard Glen section. So we feel like, in some ways, that that's been moved. And we can tell, and as previously talked about on the Ballard Glen section, that if this goes through, the, all indications are, my clients will file suit to stop it. So we're asking you all, as the commission, this is the chance to stop that potential litigation between the developer and the neighborhood over something that neither one of us want. So again, there's not been strict adherence to the subdivision regulations. We know that. I've named three neighborhoods. I don't know how many more there are. So at that, I'll have a few questions at the end, after my clients get up and do their presentations.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Who would like to come next? Who would like to speak in opposition or have questions? Just need your name and address, please.
Mark Odde, 3710 Ballard Woods Court, 4068, Lot 54, where the current easement runs next to my property. My question for the commission is, if that connector road is approved as a stub road, who maintains that stub road? The county or the HOA? This is a very important contention because we already have two stub roads in Ballard Woods that the developer left us to maintain for eternity.
Chairman, you want to?
Well, if it's built to county standards, it would be maintained by the county once it's put the final coat of asphalt and it's turned over for maintenance.
There's no cul-de-sac for a snowplow to turn around. That's why we have to maintain the existing stub roads because they don't meet the turnaround requirement.
Well, if you're talking about North Fork Court, that was something that was approved as a private road, not as a county road in Ballard, existing Ballard Woods.
What will Lot 1617 be? Is that a county road or is that a private road? That was a cul-de-sac at the firehouse. Now it's a.
It's built, it would be built to county standards and it would connect to the future phase of another development one day. And if it's built to county standards and there are driveways coming off it, it would be maintained by the county. Once county, hang on, once the county accepted it as being complete.
But if it's not connected to anything for the next five years, it's just a dead-end street without a cul-de-sac, who maintains it? Who clears it?
Till the county. I, the answer's always the same. If it's built to county standards, once it's complete and a final coat of asphalt, and they ask for the bond to be released and the county then accepts it into the county road network, it would be maintained by the county. And that's, I'm talking about the ones at sixteen and seventeen.
Yes. That's our concern because we don't want to have to pay to pave it or to clear it as we are the other two stub roads that are under our responsibility currently.
Right. And that's because the developer wanted those other roads to be private and they weren't built to county standards. That's why you're doing the maintenance on them. But any road that's in the county road, accepted for maintenance in the county road system, is maintained by the county.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi. Larry Myers, M-Y-E-R-S. I live at 3902 Ballard Woods Court, 40068. I live on Lot 57, which was next, the little pie-shaped lot there, right next to where 58 was, where the connector road was going to be put in. I don't know whether, I was hearing something else different than what I think was being said. Is the county going to start off initially clearing those roads of snow and taking care of those roads on the cost when they have not been to final fruition? So would it be five, what I'm thinking is, is there's five years at least of maintenance in there before they get turned over to the county? That's going to be done by who?
By the developer. Until the road is complete and they ask for the bond to be released and the county to accept the maintenance responsibilities, it's maintained by the developer.
Okay. That answers that part.
Let me answer. That's a legal question. The developer has to dedicate the roads to public use. And once they're dedicated to public use, if they're built to county road standards when they're completed, then fiscal court may take them into the county road system. They do not have to, but they must always do.
That was my understanding. But the issue with us is, prior to being accepted by the county, you know, I'm wondering who's going to get.
The county doesn't clear any roads that are not in the county road system.
Right. Okay. Now, the second issue, and I came to Mr. Urban's office after the meeting where they, was tabled about Lot 58. And we had some discussions over these connector roads. You know, when I moved in in 2007, the only road that I was worried about and concerned about at all that was going to affect our neighborhood was the one going where the red, where the red thing is right through here. Not an issue. At the time, supposedly Section Four was the last section being built in Ballard Woods. There was no Section Five. Because if you look, there's no connecting roads coming out of Section Four as it stands. So you apparently accepted it without connector roads at that time, which would have been before I came, a couple of years. So when I looked at buying, I looked at that. So then the issue of, well, two days before the hearing on the connector roads, the notification, I was talking to Mr. Schum on the phone because they were doing some work on that lot. And there was no indication during that conversation at all about a connector road. And then two days later, I get notice. So, you know, when they're talking about they didn't get notice on some of the traffic stuff, I think that's sort of the way the system works. Because I got notice on Ballard Glen when Section Three was being brought before the Planning Commission. And during that, I spoke, I got up and spoke because our concern was they were going to try to connect Ballard Glen to Ballard Woods. And at that time, I was told that's not what we're here for, and there was no connecting roads on there. But then, all of a sudden, Lot 58 pops up and that happens. So then that disappears. So then we have a meeting at the firehouse and the new proposal was brought to us with no connecting roads. There was a, I believe, a cul-de-sac shown on there, but not a connecting road. Then all of a sudden, and not all of us get notice because of the way the system works, apparently only a few adjoining landowners get notice, all of a sudden, we're back to connecting roads again. So I, I mean, I don't really know where the connecting roads issue is coming up. Because I've been to a lot of other subdivisions and Mr. Urban and I talked, even the subdivision he lived in went to court over a connecting road. And there's so many connecting roads or non-connecting roads in this county, I don't see how you can enforce connecting roads. And I still, and I'm happy to hear that the, it's recommended for a traffic study, an actual study versus an oversight. Because I, when you're adding thirty-four lots to a, we're around a hundred lots, so you're adding a third more, that main road has to be impacted. So, you know, I'm happy to hear about that. But that would be my comments if anybody has any questions over my concerns.
Okay. None? Okay. We'll have an opportunity here in a little bit.
Okay.
For questions. All right. Who'd like to go next?
Good afternoon. Brian Welch. I live at 3708 Ballard Vista Court. I guess, let me start off with, maybe we can clear up, maybe this isn't the right forum. It was brought up and suggested, and I've heard a couple different times of some, I don't know what, if you would call them, appearance of conflicts of interest or different opinions. Mr. Urban, can you set the record straight on the comment that was made about whether or not you fought a proposed connection in your own development and won? Is that true?
That's irrelevant to this case. But what I will clear up is that everybody was told at the Ballard Glen Section Three hearing that there would be a stub street. So what's irritating me right now is that this plan came before the TRC and a neighborhood meeting without the stub street. And now we're being pointed at as the ones who are requiring this when we, it was, it was real clear after the meeting that there would be a stub street in any future development. And I remember Mr. Nichols standing up and saying, "Well, then we'll sue." So it was on the record months ago. And the fact that it was brought forward without that stub by the developer actually really irritates me. So I won't take up any more of your time.
No, thank you for that. And I was at that meeting at the, at the fire station and the way it was presented, as you described, without a stub. And the developer pointed the finger back at the planning and zoning and said, "It's not me, it's them. He's not for it. We're not for it. It's them." Something else that came up at the meeting at the fire station is Mr. Schum, and even at the meeting back in May and June, and again at the technical review session, he repeatedly said, "I'm no longer the developer of Ballard Woods. It's done." And even at the, you're on record, under oath, you disagree with what I'm saying. We can go back and look.
Don't get personal here.
Okay. So at the technical review meeting, some of you were in attendance, some of you weren't. I know it was, it's a different group, back on June 20th. He said that he was done with Ballard Woods. Thank goodness. He was glad to be done with it. That struck me as interesting and telling in a lot of ways. Because he's done with it, but yet he wants to now call this Section Five Ballard Woods. He wants to use the Ballard Woods name, the Ballard Woods streets. And a lot, rezone a lot as a lot owner in Ballard Woods and convince the homeowners in Ballard Woods to allow him to do that on the backs of Ballard Woods because he's purchased this property. I have an easy solution to this problem. Connect to Ballard Glen. You own Ballard Glen. Connect to Ballard Glen, call it Ballard Glen, and have two stub streets out of Ballard Glen. Problem solved. No need to turn a lot into a road. No need for the county to take it over in Ballard Woods and maintain it. No litigation and lawsuits. Connect it. I mean, look at the map. He owns the property in Ballard Glen. You don't want to be part of Ballard Woods, then why are you calling it Ballard Woods? Why are you connecting it to Ballard Woods? Why are you putting a proposal to turn a lot in Ballard Woods into a road? It makes no sense to me. People do not move to Oldham County because we have connected neighborhoods. They move to Oldham County because we have neighborhoods that are different. Ballard Woods is one of those neighborhoods. I ask you not to turn Ballard Woods into any other neighborhood that you could move to around the country. It's special. Keep it special. There's nothing wrong with having premier neighborhoods in Oldham County. I hear the traffic study is suspect. The schools are a no. The roads are a no. The HOAs a no. The water quality issues, that is the upper reaches of the Floyd's Fork. Very environmentally sensitive, extremely environmentally sensitive. And the impact to those, that area, that watershed, it is a blue line stream. I just ask, I mean, I think, again, maybe my proposal is too simple, but it just makes sense. If you did not own Ballard Glen, then that may be a higher hurdle. You own Ballard Glen, connect it to Ballard Glen and figure out another stub in Ballard Glen, finish the development of Ballard Woods, the five lots you have, build them, done. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
We'll have an opportunity after a while. All right. Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Kerry Coyle, I own 3904 North Fork Court.
What's your last name again?
Kerry Coyle, C-O-Y-L-E.
Thank you. Go ahead.
This may not be the proper place for some of my comments, but anyway, I'm one of the property owners. I honestly believe that will, by connecting there, which will, by any intensive purposes, anybody think of it, it's going to end up connecting to whatever property ends up right here. There's going to be a developer sometime, so it's going to connect there. That's why the stub road's there. So I think because that side is lesser value, it may lessen my value. So that has a little bit of a thing with me. The other thing, the additional traffic flow, but whoever she talked about, if it's only considering thirty-three lots, it's definitely got to be redone because you're going to pick up another fifty-plus in that area I just marked up there whenever it's developed at a later period of time. Lastly, probably only, it discusses me, there's a natural water flow somewhere down through there that cuts my property, goes under my driveway. When they did the water study or whatever, there's going to be additional water coming down through here. You're going to have four, five, six houses right through there and then some more over in this other development. Will that study potentially account for any additional water? It's going to come off those pieces of property due to less than foliage on the ground, which absorbs water. And it's going to come into that drain which goes under my driveway, my actual physical driveway going to the house. So that's the only other thing that I question I have, and that may not be the proper place for it.
No, that's fine. Sure.
So, anyway, so, anyway, that's all I had to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Is, I think that was the only four that stood up. Is there anybody else that would like to? Okay. There's still twenty-five minutes left, so come on forward. We'll need to get you sworn in. And did I, do you want to speak also? Over here, the lady, I'm sorry, right there. Uh-huh. Okay. All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Get you to stand up and we'll get you sworn in at the same time. Okay? There's none?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. And just name and address, please.
Russell McPhail, 4032 Ballard Woods Drive.
Just spell your last name, please.
M-C, capital P-H-A-I-L.
Okay. Go ahead.
I just want to express my opposition to putting a roadway through Lot Number Ninety-eight, creating an additional road. I'm fairly new to the subdivision. I've only lived there a year and a half. One of the reasons we moved there was because it appeared like the development was developed. There were no existing stub roads, nothing that was going to indicate that this neighborhood was going to get larger. Also. Also, in my research, the existing deed restrictions that Mr. Schum put up included that no property owner could make a right-of-way through their property. Even considering him as a developer, those deed restrictions restricted the developer from utilizing any property that he owned with an existing right-of-way. Here, we're talking about one of the things on the docket is, he's trying to change. So in my opinion, with the deed restrictions that I was aware of when I purchased property, he's contractually obligated to only use existing right-of-ways or open space. Lot 98, my assumption, I don't know, but it's a residential lot. It's not indicated as a right-of-way, and it's not indicated as open space. So I just wanted to express my opposition to changing that lot to a roadway.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yes, sir.
My name is Rick Lemker. I live at 3604 Ballard Trace, 40068.
Spell your last name.
L-E-M-K-E-R. I'm standing up unexpectedly because there was one point I thought someone was going to make, and I didn't hear it. So, and I asked your indulgence because this may not be the venue. But when we were at the firehouse meeting and all of the information was presented, at least four times, Mr. Schum was asked, "Will you abide by the covenants and deed restrictions of Ballard Woods?" Our expectation was, if that's going to be Ballard Woods at some point, it would be turned over to the Ballard Woods HOA. And we don't want to have a neighborhood with two distinct things. His consistent reply is, "Well, I'll work with the board." That didn't come across to me very well. And so my only request is that you all will have to make a decision on this whole matter. If the decision is for him to build that and call it Ballard Woods, is it possible to add an approval condition that says it must meet all of the deed restrictions and covenants of the existing Ballard Woods?
That's in the... Attorney, speak, put that on the record.
Conditional of approval?
I'll turn your mic on, sir, if you would.
It can be added as a binding element.
If they agree to it.
If they agree to it, yes.
Okay, and if they do not agree to it, are they still able to call it Ballard Woods and insist we take it over at some point?
I don't know the answer to that question. If you have an illegal right to that name... You're Ballard Glen, right?
No, I'm Ballard Woods.
Ballard Wood.
Can I... I think you could answer the, ask the attorney for the applicant that question because they are the ones who set up homeowners' associations. And sometimes it has the same name, but Section 1, or Section 2, or Section 3. Sometimes they're combined. So it's really a matter of how they're going to set up their deed restrictions as to what name they use and whether or not it becomes part of your HOA or a separate HOA.
Okay. But with that understanding, if they do intend for us to, our HOA to be the management thing, then we would have the right to insist on a consistent set of restrictions?
That's really outside of our...
Okay. I just wanted to ask that question. I wasn't sure where the answer would go. Thank you.
All right. All right, is there anyone else that has testimony in opposition to this application? Okay, Mr. Nichols, you've got about 20 minutes left. Is there anything else that you need to add? I need to get you to come...
We'll have an opportunity to summary. Is this it?
No, 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 no. This is just the original 50 minutes.
And so one of the questions that I was going to have before the last homeowner came up was, like, what assurance do we have that this Ballard Woods, Section 5, is actually going to be what we contend is Ballard Woods and not just using the name? Because clearly, we contend, and it's our position that for them to be able to even connect at all to a new section of Ballard Woods, it's got to be a part of Ballard Woods, which would mean it would have to abide by the same homeowners' regulations and deed restrictions. So that was, and maybe the applicant can address that in the response on how they plan to give us assurance that this new section is actually going to be legally a part of the Ballard Woods community.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anyone else that has not had an opportunity to speak that would like to in testifying, posing the application? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll now move into questioning of the applicant and those opposing the application by the commission. Commissioners, any questions? Any questions? Yeah, yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a question for opposing counsel. Currently, the homeowners' association, is it the same for Ballard Woods 1, 2, 3, and 4? Or is there Ballard Woods 1, Ballard Woods 2?
It's all the same.
All the same?
Yes, sir.
And currently, 5, there is nothing. That's what we're discussing.
5 is not, obviously, is not a part of Ballard Woods at this point.
Is that all, Mr. Hapling?
That's it.
Okay. Any additional questions? Anyone else have any questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Fowey.
And I am confused. Is, I guess this is for the applicant, is it Ballard Woods part of, is it Ballard Woods 5? And is it going to have the same restrictions as 1, 2, 3, and 4?
Mr. Baxter?
Mr. Schum answered that question.
Okay.
I believe he's been previously sworn in.
Don't leave him in the paperwork.
Thank the commission for this time this afternoon. When we had the homeowners' association meeting, at that point in time, I was asked many times...
Schum, just name an address, please, if you would.
Walt Schum, 6100 Breeze Hill Road, Crestwood, Kentucky, 40014.
Thank you.
To back up for a moment, Section 1, Section 2, Section 3, and Section 4 are all signed by the developer, Walt Schum. So no matter what any of us say, I'm the developer. And I'll be the developer signing the record plat for Section 5. Secondly, the deed restrictions, without notice to the previous developer, or the developer, were changed indiscriminately about May, March of this year. I received notification after the 30-day period had run, and they were filed at the courthouse. And I've not made anything of that because my intention is to get along with the neighbors. Ironically, I developed that neighborhood, and many of the houses the folks that are speaking live in. And I think you can ask them if they've been satisfied with the quality of life in that area. I don't see anything different happening in Section 5. At the homeowners' meeting, I am not in agreement with every single word in the restrictions as they rewrote them. So at the homeowners' meeting, I told them that I would work closely with the board to craft restrictions that were very similar. And that's all we can really say at this point because we don't have an approved project. We don't have deed restrictions written. We have what we've already accomplished. I rolled the deed restrictions from Sections 1, Sections 2, Sections 3, and Sections 4 over continuously on each other because they seem to work well for the neighborhood. I'm into less interference, not more. And I think people should live within the guidelines that they all bought into. In respect to a comment from the bench, when we developed this plan and went to the homeowners' meeting, traffic assessment, which was the major driver, told us we didn't need a stub road. Secondarily, already a stub road exists on Ballard Woods Drive or Ballard Woods Court that could be opened at any time. So we did not include a stub road in our plan until we were brought to TRC, read the regulation, and told that we were required to have a stub road. So I take exception to the comment directed at me personally. I was happy to add that when it was pointed out in TRC and didn't make a fuss about it, knowing that this day would come when I would stand here in front of all of you with all my neighbors at my back saying, "He's a liar." And that's pretty much what they've said. And subsequently, from here. So my intention was not to have a stub. A cul-de-sac suited me well and suited our plan well. But regulation requires it, and we were told to include it. So we did. We're compliant. We're compliant in every phase of what's been presented here for this development. And lastly, this area of the property, which up till February was unbeknownst to be available to us, and only through health reasons of the owner did become available, did we subsequently purchase it. This particular piece was reserved in a large 50-plus acre tract for future development by the now-defunct owner of Jordan River, all the way back in 2003. All of this was done in 2003 and 2004. And I subsequently came in in 2012 and started, at the urging of several county officials, trying to redevelop that and take care of a number of issues, which I think we've done a fairly good job of. The property we're talking about here is owned CO1 and AG1. It's not zoned appropriately for R1 or R2, which would put it more in line with the homes of Ballard Glen. So we are developing it in accordance with its land use under the comprehensive plan. Little longer answer to your question, but I hope that satisfies you. Anything else while I'm up here?
Any additional questions for Mr. Schum?
Additional question. Lot 98, is that going to be part of Section 5, or does it stay in Section 4? Or it becomes... What section's that going to be in?
I'm glad you asked. I would suspect that it's always going to be part of Section 4, but it will become part of the minor plat for Section 5. I'll have to let my engineer or attorney answer the technicality of that because I don't know. But I do want to tell you this about Lot 98. The person I thought would be most opposed to this is the gentleman that lives to the northwest. And at the community meeting, after we made our presentation, he came up and said, "If you'll take down those trees and plant grass, I'll be glad to mow that right-of-way for you." I'm frankly surprised we have opposition here today because we're in compliance with all of the planning and zoning regulations as stipulated. So I told him I'd be very agreeable to helping him do that and plants and buffing plants and so forth. I'm going to stop with that until you ask any more questions.
Any additional questions for, yes, Mr. Finney?
Question for Ms. Zimmerman. When you ran the study for the intersection there of the driveway and Highway 22, what time of day was that run?
4:30 to 5:30 p.m.
Was school in session?
Yes, it was.
What was the date?
May the 8th.
And 33 lots plus the existing lots in front of that will not generate more than 100 trips a day?
I did not say that. The total development of 137 lots would generate 137 p.m. peak hour trips. The additional 33 lots generates an additional 32 trips. It was originally approved for 105 lots.
So if Section 5 is completed, what would be the total impact on the highway, the total trips a day?
The total expected could be 137 trips, yes.
All right, so that does not, that in itself does not trigger any further studies or anything?
The way the regulation or the rules are written is when you bring in a total of 100 trips at one time. This is an additional 32 trips.
So only 32 trips out of 33 lots, one car a day?
Yes. In the p.m. peak hour, I mean, we've had this conversation specifically, you and me, several times. We're talking about one hour of the day, not all day long.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions? Any additional questions? All right, oh, Mr. Duck, sorry.
Ms. Wa. I believe you presented a document that basically said that KTC, Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, indicated that a traffic study would have to be done. Who do we, I know the commission here does things, but if KTC is saying that any encroachment or anything goes onto Highway 22, which is state highway, do, will they need to do a traffic study? Further traffic study?
That's what I'm recommending in concurrence with the state's recommendation. I want to clarify that I did not, at the last minute, am stating that I'm definitively requiring a left-turn lane or recommending that a left-turn lane is required. I'm in concurrence with the highway department that it seems there's possibility that some further analysis needs to be done. And in concurrence with their recommendation, I'm recommending that further analysis be conducted before final approval.
Final approval by whom?
Well, it would have to be, in order to make sure it happens, it would have to be based on Oldham County's construction approval would be the catch in it. Because if they don't, if they're not required to get a permit from the highway department, there's not that catch. And they're only required to get a permit from the highway department if there's encroachment in the right-of-way. And for just the mere construction of a subdivision in the rear, they're not required to encroachment permit. But the state has said they want further study at construction plan review.
So your recommendation is that they need to get this additional study?
Yes.
Thank you. I guess my next question, not for you.
Okay.
I guess my next question would be for Mr. Urban or Amy, one of the two. Either one can answer it. The previous binding elements indicated where the stub streets were supposed to be. And also, I guess, utility easements, and also, I guess, any questions about, I guess, Number 7 and Number 8? I guess the binding elements for 7 and Number 8 on the original, because of school capacity? I mean, do they have to be changed?
No, those remain with the original approval. So your binding elements would only affect the new section.
New phase?
Correct.
Okay. And what about the change, and I guess wherever the Lot 65 was for the stub street for the Miller property? Would that have to be changed?
My opinion is no, because that remains with the original subdivision of Section 4. And it's already on the record plat for Section 4. That stub street is already shown on the record plat for Section 4.
And I guess that's all for you. And I guess for Mr. Baxter or the developer? My only question is that, excuse me, the existing stub street off of Ballard Woods Drive, is that Lot 58? Is that what it is?
Between 54 and 55, right? Between Lots 54 and 55.
What happens to that stub street now?
Baxter, come a little bit closer to the mic, please.
Back in 2002, when this plan was brought before the board, we were required to put a stub street in. We picked that as the most logical place to put it at that point in time, based on the engineer's assessment. That stub street is part of that record plat. It's going to stay there. There's no, we've not brought an issue in front of this board to change that. It's, at this point, moved to us. So it's there. It is, at this point, grass, and the homeowners enjoy the green space, so I understand why they have not, why they don't want it open. I understand that perfectly. Wish it were to do again, I'd have paved the thing and put it there 15 or 18 years ago, but we did not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions? Okay, Mr. Urban, do you have anything?
Well, I do want to address, now that we're beyond the, kind of in the questioning, the question about my own involvement in my own subdivision. First of all, I was a private citizen. I wasn't the planning director at the time. And second of all, the conditions were completely different. There were steep topographic issues. There was a creek crossing. And more importantly, the road going out of that connection was only 18 feet wide. And so it wouldn't handle additional traffic. So I did want to answer that. I didn't want to put you off, but it was completely different. I don't want to get in a push-and-shove match with Mr. Schum, or anyone for that matter, but for a long time, and as a matter of fact, we had a pre-app meeting at one point where Ballard Glen, the Miller property, actually showed 2021. Ballard Glen, the Miller property, actually showed two stub connections into this proposed development. And so to be told that the bench is making these statements, I think, is not appropriate. I mean, we have talked about interconnective streets and developments of new subdivisions for decades. And granted, there are some that haven't been approved, and there have been some that have been improved. There are some that were not constructed that we forced, like from North Ridge into the school campus. And then there were others that were barricaded. All of this is relevant only to this case, whether or not there should be a connection. And Ms. Crosby is nodding her head up and down. I think other commissioners that have been on this board a long time have always grappled with, do we stub to adjoining properties or not? And that has been in the regulations for a long, long time.
All right. Before we wrap... Anything else? Any other questions before we wrap this up? All right, seeing none. We'll now move into the rebuttal evidence and cross-examination by the applicant. Mr. Baxter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Your presentation?
Yeah. So there's been a little discussion, and I just put this flat in here. This was actually something... An exhibit that I believe staff produced, and then I was able to add this nifty little flag right up here. This is from the April meeting. There was... This is the existing stub road from Ballard Woods into the Miller property that we talked about in April. We talked about it in... Okay? So that just gives you a little bit of a point of reference, that that is shown on the record plat. And Mr. Douglas, this is the property that Mr. Schum was referring to when you asked him the question just a moment ago. So I just wanted to put that up. These are the deed restrictions for Ballard Woods that got recorded on 3/13 of 2018. A relevant section of it that... It says that... They put in here, and I would ask you all to recall, that in your regulations, it indicates that deed restrictions will not indicate that you cannot have stub roads to other developments. It is actually part of the regulations. It says that you cannot have a deed restriction. And I think it says that homeowners will not file a lawsuit about connecting to other neighborhoods. And I can get you the specific language. I have it on another slide. But this is what Mr. Schum was talking about when they indicated that he indicated that they revised the deed restrictions without notice to him, and basically have tried to limit access through this deed restriction, which is, in my estimation, a violation of U.R.O.L.'s regulation. See if I can find... This is the Section 5.34E of the Oldham County Subdivision Regulations as it refers to a stub road. And the last sentence says, "The deed restriction of a subdivision shall prohibit property owners from opposing or filing lawsuits against the future street connections." So that is what U.R.O.L.'s regulations call for. And if you compare that to what I just showed you, the revised deed restrictions, their deed restrictions are basically prohibiting those restrictions into other subdivisions. So there is clearly some type of... We've got some things that are at odds here, but this is... Was the existing regulation, and this regulation was in existence well before they revised their deed restrictions in March of this year. I've been to a lot of these things, and I know when, you know, people get up and they get their emotions a little bit high. So from that perspective, I know that makes all of us a little bit uncomfortable. It certainly makes me a little bit uncomfortable, and certainly to the extent that there's been some calling out, going both directions here. That's really not the issue that we're here about today. We're here about whether or not what my client has done, what they are proposing, meets the regulations and the ordinance that is in effect for Oldham County. And the staff report indicates that both with regard to '17 and '18, that the proposals that we are making conform with... Are in compliance with the regulations. And that's the question. And we have done what we were told to do. We have complied with those regulations, and we are here seeking approval of both of these based upon them. Now, there may be a question, and I understand, I think, when we first learned about, for example, Ms. Wall's opinion, we may have misread that to require something more, the requirement that there be a turn lane, because there was some mention about it. I'm not sure that I understand that to be the case. I think, and Ms. Wall's not looking at me, because I'm trying to... I think what you're suggesting is that we have a requirement, that we have a traffic study to confirm whether or not a turn lane is warranted. Is that correct? Okay. So when you read "turn lane," we got ourselves a little bit jazzed up about that, because you're talking about something that is a major expense that maybe was not contemplated after we came out of TRC. I think we're a little more willing to live with a traffic study, are we not, Mr. Schum?
Certainly.
Okay.
Mr. Baxter?
Yes, sir.
Let me just, so we can get that on the record. Ms. Wall, would you come back up?
Sure.
So we can, you know...
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I know better.
Would you re-ask your question, sir?
And just so that I understand, somewhere in that letter, and I apologize, it's not up here, it says something about warranting a left turn lane into the subdivision off of Highway 22. I guess that would be going probably west to east, right? Something like that, or north to south.
Left turn, westbound.
And...
No, be eastbound left turn.
And so your recommendation is that there be a full study done to determine whether that is warranted?
Yes. I said, I stated in number three, that preliminarily review indicates that a left turn is warranted. Number four says, "It's recommended that there be a condition applied requiring further study provided for the state requirements, which could include other regulations, recommendations, guidelines, to determine possible 22 improvements."
Thank you, ma'am. The other thing that I think is important to note here is that I know people come up and they say, you know, "We've got a water quality issue," or "We've got an issue with school capacity," or "We have this other thing that we believe to be an issue." But the truth of the matter is, is you don't have any factual information that there is a water quality issue. What you have is the sworn testimony of my engineer to indicate that there's going to be detention to control the runoff on this property, which, as you all are well aware, will have to comply with the county standards for there to be detention basins on the property. You have the school coming forward and explaining their formulation, which I'm not going to act like I understand how that works, but nonetheless, indicating a recommended phasing based upon their regulations of 15... No more than 15 units per year, which we have no issue with. So there is not factual information that would indicate that we are in any way not in compliance with the regulations or the ordinances. So I would only point that out to you as part of the consideration that... In rebuttal to some of the things that were made, which are not necessarily factual, they are opinions made by some of these homeowners. So with that, I'll sit down. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right. Mr. Nichols, I would assume you'll do rebuttal?
A little bit.
All right.
I guess I want to rebut what Mr. Schum said about the amended deed restrictions and the section that he put up here. I would say that, based on the... My clients, that they did proper notice, and all the homeowners, there was notice put out as required in the original deed restrictions. So they weren't trying to hide it and slip something in. And the only parts that they did change was the part that they pointed out, talking about... Their reading of the original Homeowners Association deed restrictions was, "This can only... You can only put connector roads to new Ballard Woods properties or new Ballard Woods sections." And all they did was go in and make it clear that they have that. It's a Ballard Woods section that it has to be connected to. In addition, they took out... Once they took over the property, there was no longer a developer. He was done developing the property. So once they took over, so that's the first. And then additionally, he said, "Lot 99 owner didn't have an issue with them putting in the stub road." But let's not forget, that was at the fire station when they thought that this section was only going to be Ballard Woods, and there's not... There was not going to be a connector to Ballard Glen. So he would... I would say that that was a good faith effort on the part of the Ballard Woods Homeowners Association to say, "Hey, we recognize his property rights, and we don't want to not allow him to develop acres that he owns, but we think he should have to abide by the deed restrictions." And so that is why they were okay with that, and the Lot 99 owner didn't oppose it at that time. And then finally, I would say that clearly, it's one of the binding elements that we ask you to add to a binding element that, if you do approve this, if you... First of all, if you approve the road, the connector road, and then approve the subdivision plan, we ask that you put a binding element that requires them that this part of Ballard Woods, Section 5, have to abide by the same restrictions as the rest of the Ballard Woods sections. And if they're concerned with the section about the connector roads, obviously, we'd be beyond that at that point, because the final connector road, we know if this gets approved. We all know that the rest, without us stopping it through a circuit court, if you all approve it here, we know that they're all going to be connected. So we ask... I ask you today to allow what both parties want, allow him to develop this Section 5 without the connector road to Ballard Glen, much like many other neighborhoods in Oldham County.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to have a rebuttal that spoke in opposition? Anyone else? All right. With that, Mr. Nichols, we're down to final statement.
I think I just kind of gave it, and given the time, I will just let those... My last statement stands as my final statement.
Okay. Mr. Baxter, final statement.
Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, so again, and we do end up replowing some of this ground, but again, we've got two applications here, '17 and '18. It is our position, as it relates to both '17 and '18, which I believe is confirmed by your staff report, that we have met the applicable regulations, we've met the applicable rules, and that we are in compliance. We presented plans with no variances, no waivers, and we are in compliance. And we are entitled to have approval of both '17 and '18. And I've given you sample motions as it relates to '17 and sample motions as it relates to '18 for approval of both the revised plan on Ballard Woods, Section 4, and the development plan on the proposed Ballard Woods, Section 5. I believe that my client has indicated that there is no objection to adding a condition of approval, that there will be the traffic study that is recommended by Ms. Wall. I know there's going to be some discussion about those deed restrictions, but I think Mr. Schum expressed his concern with regard to those deed restrictions, that he wants to work very closely with the Homeowners Association. But again, they... We can agree to disagree, but he did not have notice, and he found out about those restrictions being changed after the fact. So he wants to carefully review those restrictions and make sure that they didn't change something else as it relates to something significant within the subdivision. But from that perspective, that is our presentation, and certainly, we appreciate your time today, and we look forward to having your vote. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. We are now down to... Well, the docket is completed on docket both PZ-18-017 and PZ-18-018. And as always, I will call on Mr. Urban to outline, and we would be considering docket PZ-18-017 first. So, Mr. Urban?
As stated in the application, this is a request for a revised preliminary subdivision plan, and it simply affects Lot Number 98. And I did not hear any binding elements that might be placed on that particular proposal. There are sample motions in your packet, as always, and that's all the guidance I can give you.
Okay. Mr. Carter, anything you need to add?
No, that's the...
Just for this?
Yeah, that's for the stub to permit Lot 98, I believe it is, to... Till I have to be a roadway to connect with Ballard Woods.
Great. All right. Commissioners, you've heard...
I'm sorry. It's a redevelopment plan.
It's a revised subdivision plan.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, you've heard Mr. Urban and Mr. Carter explain what's being requested on the first docket we'll vote on, which is the 18-017. What is the pleasure of the commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Carter?
Motion.
I'm sorry?
Are you ready for the motion?
I am. Yes, sir.
I'd like to move to approve docket PZ-18-017, which is the revised preliminary plan. I believe, first of all, it complies with any future land uses. It also has at least three compliances of the comprehensive plan. Under the transportation portion, it'd be Objective T11. Their commentary there talks about access management and processes that provides access to land developments, including maintaining efficient movement of people and so forth under that T-11. Under LU-1-3, there's an item number four there that talks about compatibility with surrounding residential density and housing, et cetera. Under LU-2-1, to establish neighborhood development that promotes connectivity between the neighborhoods and integration of community. And it goes on to talk about compatibility and other developments in the neighborhood.
All right. Mr. Carter, is that adequate, sir?
Yes.
All right. Do we have a second? Ms. Crosby, seconds? All right. Now, any discussion on the motion to approve docket PZ-18-017 for approval of the revised preliminary subdivision plan for Ballard Woods, Section 4, Lot 98?
I have a question that goes back to the slide that Mr. Baxter put up in his rebuttal that where he stated that the... We had a law against... Thing against allowing them to change this. But if you read back to two sentences back before that, it says this thing must be posted, must be listed as a right-of-way, in other words, a pass, a stub road. And it wasn't. So how does that affect legality of what we're doing?
Mr. Carter?
The slide that had the section, the... It was Section 4.
Let me ask, I guess...
Section 5.3E, Number 4.
Let me just ask, how does that... I guess your question, does it relate directly to the motion?
I'm not sure, but what I'm worried is what's... Since it is our rule... This is... These are... This section is our rules. Does it make what we're doing not legal?
I think you're confusing the next 018. This is simply to change what was approved as a buildable lot into a street.
Right.
I think you're going to the next piece, which is whether or not you can have stub streets or supposed to have stub streets. I'm not sure I know the question.
In other words, if you... Can you put that up on the screen, that section? I'll show you what I'm confused about. Now, number, I think it's, there you go, four says, each stub, stub street shall have a sign posted at the end of the street that informs the public of the planned street connection. All right. If this was not done, does this make this?
There was not a stub street there. If there is to be one, it will be up at between sixteen and seventeen, right?
I think Mr. Finney thinks that you're saying, because this is assuming, or the intention of this is now becoming a stub road into a future section?
Right.
And it wasn't, the sign wasn't posted. This is at the intent of, when it goes to record or in a subdivision plan, future stub roads, this, for anything that's proposed for the future. This was not proposed in the original plan. This regulation would go in place at the time, if the next docketed item gets approved, the stub road into the future section of the Miller property, it will have to be posted.
But a, a lot being converted to a stub road would not have to be posted?
That's correct, because that's what they're asking you, that's what they're asking you to consider.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to approve the, approve of the revised preliminary plan? Any further discussion? All right. This is a motion to approve on docket PZ one eight zero one seven, a revised preliminary plan on Ballard Woods, Section Four, Lot ninety-eight. Ms. Nun, if you would, let's do the vote. This is a motion to approve.
All right. Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Douglas? Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
No.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Halfling?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mr. Klingefuss?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
And Ms. Smith?
Yes.
All right. The motion to approve the revised preliminary plan on Ballard Woods, Section Four, Lot ninety-eight, has been approved on a vote of eleven to one. Next thing we'll need to consider on this, these dockets are PZ one eight zero one eight. So, Mr. Urban, would you outline what's being requested under that one?
Yes. This is a request for approval of a preliminary subdivision plan for thirty-three lots on approximately fifty-four point three acres, to be known as Ballard Woods, Section Five. There are proposed motions in your packet, and there are some, also some proposed binding elements in your packet, and I'm going to read them, because there are some additions. The approval applies only to the plan presented at the July twenty-fourth, twenty-eighteen Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. There shall be no subdivision of any lot in a greater number of lots without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission. Number three is the preliminary plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at the time of approval, and no record plat will be approved until all standards are satisfied. And number four, I'm going to change, actually, because it's been requested that a full traffic impact study shall be conducted to satisfy the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet regarding impact on Kentucky twenty-two and potential need for improvements. Number five would be a maximum of fifteen building permits per year can be issued, starting at record plat, in compliance with the current school capacity ordinance. And number six would be a question mark as to whether or not you're going to consider anything regarding the compliance with the existing section of Ballard Woods deed restrictions. And I'm not sure that that needs to be a binding element or not. You guys can decide that.
All right. Mr. Carter, anything that you need to add?
No.
All right. Commissioners, you've heard what's being requested on docket PZ one eight zero one eight, which is approval of preliminary subdivision plan on, for thirty-three lots. We'd like, the chair would entertain a motion at this time. Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My move for approval of the plan as presented, based on testimony and evidence presented here today, I find that the application is in compliance with the objectives of comprehensive planning, including those cited in the previous motion by Mr. Horton, which include T one dash one, L U one dash three, L U two dash one, which respectively deal with transportation, compatibility, and connectivity. I would incorporate the aforementioned conditions of approval mentioned by Mr. Urban, except for the last, dealing with the deeds of restriction, HOA. I would prefer not to have the commitment of this next section to, to that which appears to be in question.
Okay. Mr. Carter, is that adequate, sir?
Yes.
All right. We, you've heard a motion to, a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
And Ms. Bonet, seconds. All right. Any further discuss, or any discussion on the motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan? Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, we will now proceed to vote. I ask Ms. Nun to take a roll call vote on the motion to approve a preliminary subdivision plan on docket PZ one eight zero one eight.
All right. Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mr. Halfling?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas? Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Klingefuss?
Yes.
That's everybody.
All right. The motion to approve preliminary subdivision plan on docket PZ one eight zero one eight has been approved on a vote of twelve to zero. Commissioners, with that, we'll take about a five-minute recess to reset for our next docket.